No, it's just a storm drain project. So you have the public facilities. It's attributed all to the storm drain facilities. And so twenty percent of the building, total building, twenty percent is one point five.
You know what I'm saying here is there was, this is where you had the graphics. And what I'm saying is there wasn't a one seventy point five that showed layout in the storm drain. It's like that for the public works. So it stopped at number twenty five. It's twenty two.
Right, yeah. I think we say somewhere in the middle. It's not.
Anyway, here's, these are just the other things. It's this one and this one. They match up. So I try to, I try to bring in the questions and also the similarities between the pages.
So you're saying these don't, they look like they match?
They do. They don't match? Yeah. Well, this is the number one project. This is showing why it's the number one project.
Right.
Because of the score of fifteen.
All right.
Are we recording?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome to South Weaver City Council Meeting of September twenty eighth. It's six P M. right now, and all council members are in attendance. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Albert, and then we'll have a prayer by Councilman Halverson.
It's time for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have to meet.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, as we come this worthy this evening, we're so very grateful for the opportunity to gather in this fine city, in this, in this building. We ask for thy Spirit to be with us as we make decisions and contemplate the different things before us regarding the city this evening. We ask thee to help us all keep in mind of all the needs of the city and, and the responsibilities that we have as, as council members, and as mayor, and as staff. Father, we're thankful for all of our armed forces and our firefighter, firefighters. We ask thee to watch over and protect them and to help them return home in safety. We're thankful for the country we live in and the freedoms we have, and we say things in thy sentence, Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilwoman Albert, and Councilman Halverson. We will begin with public comment. Please state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Please address the entire council and know that we won't respond during public comment. We're now open.
Paul Stern, twenty five, twenty seven, Dear Run Drive. These are public comments on the Storm Drain Capital Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Facilities Plan, and Impact Fee Analysis Presentation. Some of these questions I had have been answered by Brandon before the meeting. Just got a couple of minutes to talk. But the first one is on page sixty, two forty eight. The acronym E R U was first used on page sixty in the intro summary, but was not defined until page sixty two. Not being familiar with this acronym, I looked up the definition so as to comprehend what was being discussed. Page eighty five of two forty eight. Table four point two does not seem to make sense. Nearly every storm, thunderstorm in South Weaver exceeds these numbers, and they do not appear to be realistic. The current, the concern is if and how these numbers were used in the calculations. In talking to Brandon, these appear to be cumulative numbers, but the accumulation is not shown in the table. I did experience a one in five hundred year event in July of eighty six when I first moved to South Weaver. It moved water, soil, and corn kernels over a hundred and fifty yards down into my yard. I know the corn kernels because I got volunteer corn in my backyard the next year. Page. I'm serious. And it also flooded my basement. Page eighty six of two forty eight, the comments are similar to four point two. Figure four point, uh, the table four point two, sorry. Figure four point one appears to show that a thirty minute rainfall in a one hundred year event will only generate one tenth of an inch, one tenth inches of rain. And that just, that didn't make sense to me. Page one seventy, and I call it one seventy point five because there is no project P dot twenty six graphic shown in this presentation for the Public Works Site and Facility. The Storm Drain Project. Page one forty four of two forty eight shows a detailed breakout of the projected cost for the P point two six needs. Is estimated to be a seven and a half million dollar project and was considered to be the number one project in the rankings. It also appears the totals do not match between some graphics. The delta on those, if you look at the last box, that is where it's shown as being the number one project. The delta between the total project costs and strictly the storm drain cost are, are another delta that I did not see was explained. Talking to Brandon, he informed me that, that the totals do add up, or I mean, do match. But what was confusing was the title of that, of that presentation, which was Public Works Site and Facility Storm Drain Portions. Well, the storm drain portion isn't until you get to the second portion of that particular table. And two that I don't have on the, on the handout, there is the term U P D E S. And it was first mentioned on one ninety four, but it wasn't defined until page one ninety five of two forty eight. Also, pages one ninety five and one ninety six are duplicated on pages one ninety seven and one ninety eight, both listed as Exhibit One. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move to our first action item, which is approval of consent agenda, which consists of the August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one minutes, and the July budget to actual. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda for August twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, and the July budget to actual.
Have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Our next item is the public hearing on the Storm Drain Capital Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Facilities Plan, and Impact Fee Analysis. And I am going to turn the time over to staff to talk about this before we open for public hearing.
Brandon, do you want to introduce the C F P I V N I F A?
So back in June, sorry, I was trying to pull up the packet so I have the, the right page numbers. Just a minute.
While he's pulling that up, I'll just do a brief introduction. And that is that back in June, we adopted the Storm Drain Capital Facilities Plan and then started the process, the next steps in the Facilities Plan process, which is the Impact Fee Facilities Plan and the Impact Fee Analysis. And as we were doing that, recognized a need to have the C F P better align with the I F F P and I F A. And so rather than doing an amendment to the previous C F P, we're bringing back the C F P as a, as an existing separate standalone document. So that's why we're adopting a second C F P. It will replace the previous one that was adopted in June. And then, like I said, will better align and match throughout that process, that C F P, I F F P, and I F A process.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, I am. I don't, I don't know they have anything to add to that. That basically summarizes what we've done. And, but you have before you the I F A as well, that you didn't see before, but previously you saw the C F P and the I F F P. And we just made some revisions to that so that those would line up better.
I would add, just for general clarification to the, to the community, the Capital Facilities Plan is based off of the general plan, and then looks at the storm drain needs based on the planning that was done at the general plan level. It looks at all the projects that are potentially needed. And then the Impact Fee Facilities Plan, I F F P, breaks down the Capital Facilities Plan and only looks at those that are, those projects that are impact fee eligible. And then based on that work, the I F A, the Impact Fee Analysis, is able to determine the amount the city could charge legally, the highest amount the city could charge in storm drain impact fees to future development in order to pay for the portion of the projects identified in the C F P and I F F P that are impact fee eligible. So the action tonight by the council by adopting these would also adopt the impact fee as stated in the I F A.
Are there any comments or questions by council?
One clarification, and that the I F A is for the next six years for the I F A, or the I F P, right?
Yes, the I F F P and the I F A anticipate what is coming in the next six to ten years.
Even though the C F P shows work beyond six years.
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, important clarification. The C F P identifies a lot more projects than just the next six years that are impact fee eligible.
So I didn't compare the, the new C F P to the one in June. Can you?
I can. So in my memo, I kind of tried to, to tell you what the differences were. We updated the E R Us to more align with the, our existing E R Us with our current billing so that it matches up with the, the bills that go out, so that when it comes time to do a utility rate analysis, that those will go hand in glove. Then we also updated the, a clarification between existing deficiencies and maintenance projects. An existing deficiency is, is something where, under current conditions, you would see some flooding to some degree. A maintenance project would be something that, you know, some additional piping needs to be done, or better drainage could be provided in this area. We have some areas where we've got some, some waterways that are continually causing problems for the roads. So we've identified all, everything that's, that would be needed for the city as far as storm drain goes, but added a clarification between those two. We do not have very many existing deficiencies. Overall, actually, the, the, the city is in pretty good shape as far as that goes. And then we added a clarification on how much capacity would be coming with these impact fee eligible projects in the next ten years. So even though, to Councilman Windsor's point, the C F P identifies through the build out, all of the projects that we needed through there, in the next six to ten years, there's a certain capacity that we're adding. And so we added some more clarification to that so that it, again, it would match up with the I F A.
All right, thank you, Brandon. Any other comments?
So just there's the, the statement about the maximum amount that we can approve, as I compared to the prior, the total.
It doesn't look like I included that in my memo. I believe it's about the six hundred.
I can look it up.
Okay. Instead of saying about, David will look it up. It's in the six hundred range.
Just a minute.
So it is, it's roughly about double is the maximum amount.
And just as a matter of information, I guess, education for me to, the city typically go with the maximum?
That's what I recommend.
What we've done in the past?
Yes.
Just so we cover everything?
Right. Otherwise, you're not totally funding all of those future projects.
Right.
Yeah, the amount currently in our consolidated fee schedule is six hundred and sixty five per dwelling.
Okay. Hey, anything else?
And I just had a similar comment to what was brought up by Paul on the, the rain precipitation. I mean, just a few weeks or, yeah, a few weeks ago, we had point seven nine inches of rain, and you add up all those numbers for one day, and you add up all those numbers, they don't even add up to that. You know, are we off by a decimal point?
No. What we're showing in the report is a unit storm. And what that means is all of those decimals add up to one inch. And.
Oh, the percentage of that?
Right. So then you, you, you add your intensity to that, or the total depth that you would get in a, in a ten year or a hundred year storm, and that's what was modeled.
Okay, thank you.
Right after the comments.
Do you have a public hearing?
I, is there a motion for a public hearing?
I'll make a motion for a public hearing.
Second.
Okay. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now open for a public hearing. Yes, you did. All right. Hearing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now out of public hearing. All right. Our next item is Ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirteen, Capital Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Analysis, and Impact Fee for Storm Drain, Providing for the calculation and collection of such fees. Are there comments or questions on this ordinance?
Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment that this is a long overdue update. The previous Capital Facilities Plan was two thousand and six. So in my mind, it makes sense why it's being doubled today because it's, it's been a long time in coming.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment fast on, on all this work and putting it together. It was very informative. Thank you.
I actually had no idea it was so interesting. So thank you.
It's not just the number pulled out of the air. You've got a lot of data behind it.
Yes, yes. And it needs to be legally defensible, so that's why.
Yep.
Thank you for your work on it.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirteen?
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve Ordinance twenty twenty one dash thirteen, the Capital Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Facilities Plan, Impact Fee Analysis, and Impact Fee for Storm Drain, Providing for the calculation and collection of such fees. Do I need to state the amount? Or just as noted in?
Yeah, please state it.
Okay. In the amount of one thousand, two hundred and fifty one and dollars and ninety cents.
All right, thank you.
Per, per E R U.
Oh, sorry. Per E R U. Thank you.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 All right, and the motion carries unanimously. The next item is Resolution twenty one dash forty five, twenty twenty one Interlocal Cooperation Agreement between Davis County Cities and Davis County for U P D E S, or Utah Pluton Discharge Elimination System General Permit, which was included in your packet. Are there comments or questions on this agreement?
I have a question on it, and maybe I couldn't find it in there. Is there data in there on how much? What's the term they use? Inappropriate discharge into the storm drain system? How is that monitored, measured, tracked?
You're talking about the agreement with the coalition for the?
Well, there's, there's the agreement, but it then talks about the, you know, we're going to work together to not exceed, you know, certain amounts of discharge into storm drain. Where's that information about what can and can't be and how much?
It, it depends on the cities. It's basic, it's a collaborative effort. The group gets together to talk about being compliant with the Clean Water Act in general. There are certain elements in our stormwater management plan that talk about how we're supposed to keep certain levels of things. So it, the agreement says that we'll discuss together how best to handle all of those things that come up. There are not specific totals that each city is limited to, but there are receiving waters, such as the Weaver River, that we need to protect to make sure that we don't go over those, those totals. But the agreement doesn't, isn't limiting. I guess I'm not sure if I'm really understanding the question.
I'll give you a specific example. This is one that came up from one of our residents. You know, we have sand blowing through our city, and a bunch of sand blows into the gutters and goes down in the storm drains. How much is allowed? You know, is that something that's even monitored? Is there any guidelines on? And, and that's just one item. You know, obviously, you've got other things going into the drains. And so is there somewhere where it's documented? You know, they don't want this much stuff going into the Weaver River that's going to clog up this or that.
Yes, there is a, there's a T M D L, Total Daily Maximum Load Level, that is on the Weaver River, and we have to make sure that we don't exceed that. But there's not strict monitoring of that. We, we, so in general, what we say in our stormwater management plan is that we're going to clean out catch basins on a regular basis and, but there's not really a, a way to measure that, per se, at each discharge. We don't have anything on our system that measures that.
Okay. I mean, I, I understand what they're trying to do, and I agree that it's a good thing to, to work together. I just wonder if it's, doesn't have any teeth to it? If there's nobody measuring and monitoring? Help me understand that there are teeth somewhere.
Well, this, this agreement is that we'll collaborate with other cities throughout the county to try to help all of us be compliant with the E P A. So there's nothing in this document necessarily that has.
So we need to go to an E P A document.
It's just a cooperative agreement between cities. It's not a, it's not a.
It's not a regulatory document.
It's not a regulatory document.
Right, yeah. And I'm not questioning the agreement itself. I'm just wondering, what does it, what does it look to? I mean, yeah, we're going to make this agreement, but do we know what we're agreeing to? When we get with the other cities, they're going to say, oh, yeah, South Weaver, you guys need to, you know, keep your levels at this so we don't exceed the E P A limits on this and that.
Right, yeah. No, it's not, it's not. I think I see what you're trying, what you're thinking. We, the, the E P A has, has the regulations that we need to meet. And the purpose of this agreement is to meet some of those, which are, you know, public involvement and making sure people are aware, being educated about keeping your stormwater clean. You don't, don't paint down the. Making sure people are aware, being educated about keeping your storm water clean. You don't, don't paint down the. The storm drain and things like that. Um, so they help to educate people and that those. Meet some of our requirements and then the rest of our requirements, we just meet on our own. But the, but the purpose of the group is to to try to help all of us together if we need. Uh, ordinances put together or things like that that would, that helped to regulate that. They work as a group so that. Individual cities don't have to do all that on their own. But we're looking to. The regulations. Um, from the permit. From the E P A that we have to meet. I don't feel like I'm answering your question.
No, I think I think it's good. I can get with you later on the E P A documents and stuff. That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, we're, it's not a performance that we get agreements, a cooperation agreement and.
Right.
It happens to the South Weaver Cities, the furthest upstream of a certain water body. Some cities are downstream of others and it helps to cooperate. If you're the downstream city, if you got an upstream city who's not equally cooperative, so that's the intent of of the agreement.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, I understand the intent, I think of the agreement. It just. Want to make sure that. The end aspect of the agreement, we don't. You know, that we're aware of what we're ultimately agreeing to work together.
Right. We're, we're required to meet these no matter whether or not we have this in place or not. This is just to help us.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a question on the coalition. Um, will they be coming to the council as far as just updates of what they're doing? I mean, they have, you know, most jointly purchased educational and training materials. As determined by the coalition. Is is that something that they'll be letting us know about or something that we'll just see coming out? But how involved is the coalition with the different city councils?
Not involved at all. No, no, they just, it it's, it's formed up of of a lot of public works. Um, directors, um, engineers sometimes attend those meetings. They, they come up with each year what the budget would be for. Um, the public involvement, you know, materials or or ads on TV or whatever it is that they do. And uh, then that is. Assess to each of the cities. We've, we've been participating for a lot of years. I can't speak specifically to what we've paid in the past is our portion. Um, but we could certainly research that and let you know if you're wondering about that, but. It would just continue on, we would just continue what we've been doing. It's just that the, the previous agreement did actually expire. And this is the new one.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? I do have a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash forty-five.
Still moved.
Seconded.
All right, the motion and second, any further comment? We'll have a roll call vote beginning with Councilman Windsor.
Aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously. Item number eight is resolution twenty-one dash forty-six. And that is to approve street scan service agreement that was included in your packet as well. Are there comments or questions on this agreement?
Yeah. All right, okay. Um, I'd love to hear a little bit from staff, how they came to find this product slash service. And my biggest question is, um, how long does the initial scan take to complete? How often is this done? And it has an annual maintenance. How long are we committed for? How long does staff anticipate us? Needing to utilize the service? That was more than one question. Sorry.
Okay, sure. Um, so we've, we've been actually. Kind of looking around for a number of years. We've been using iWork, which is um, at the time felt like it was. Kind of our only option, but it, in order to to know what. Roads need what treatments and when is the best time to do that so that you're maximizing your dollar. Um, it, you, you need some software to be able to do that because it's constantly changing, right? Street conditions are constantly getting worse and um, they change fairly rapidly. As compared to like a water line has a much longer lifespan than a street does. Um, and so having, having software is super helpful. We, we've been using iWork, but it has. Some inherent issues and um. What we've been looking for is something that would uh, use uh, pavement condition index, which is. Uh, as you may be aware from our initial discussion about. The um, street conditions, we use, currently use R S L, which is remaining service life. Um, that's measured in years and sometimes it's difficult because it doesn't change. Like you would anticipate per year. And so a pavement condition index would give you a better idea. Because it may stay the same or it may go down as you, as the years go on. Anyway, there, so there's some issues with what, the way we're currently doing it. So uh, the other thing that it doesn't take into account is any of our capital projects and keeping track of. Where those are, what years they're anticipated. And so obviously, we wouldn't want to do pave a new road and two years later, we're digging it up to put a new water line in. So we've been trying to to find something with, that would help to to bring all of those pieces into one software. Um, in addition, I guess I should also add that our current pavement condition. It has been done based on a visual assessment. So based on whoever is doing it, there's, there's uh. It's subject to what they're seeing as far as the, the amount of cracking and how they would rate it. What this. Will do is actually provide a, a video scan of, of everything. So it kind of takes that.
Subject.
Yeah, subjectivity, the, the human element somewhat out of it. And uh, gives us a much better rating. Anyway, we, so we've been searching, we, we came across this software. Um, there's, there are some others out there, but this one was the one that we felt like has all the tools that we need. To be able to do what we've wanted to do for years. So that, I guess, is your first question. That's how we came across this software. Um, if I can remember your other ones, the, the scan is, is done. As often as we want to. Um, but this software has a much better way of updating over the years. And so um, it should probably be done. Every maybe three to five years or something like that. Depending on how many additional roads we're adding, but as far as at. Putting, entering in the, the new roads that we pave or do some kind of a treatment on. This will help us to go farther with that.
Can I point out that's something that we do with iWork currently? Every few years, we have to call them back out and pay for them to do that assessment again. So it's similar process, just different company with, with. Elevated software capability.
It's kind of a judgment call on. As you're looking at the roads, does it, does it feel like we're starting to get out of touch with, with what the. Software, the scan originally showed us. Has it been enough years that we really need to update that? Um, but I feel like the way this is done will last longer. What was your next question?
I have one more question and, and please forgive me, Brandon. I'm really sorry, but. Will this replace any engineering dollars spent or staff dollars?
Absolutely. Um, the, because of the way that this uh, software runs. Cause I'll tell you, we had to put together, and when we were originally looking at this, we had to put together a fairly extensive spreadsheet. In the absence of. Other available uh, software that probably took us a good week to run. What this software can run in a couple of hours.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yeah, this is a software, again, that's been looked at for a long time. We put this in the budget specifically with this software in mind. Um, and now we're just bringing forward that, that purchase essentially like we do any budgeted purchase that's over ten thousand dollars. However, the background, I think, um, is important for everybody to hear, even though it was budgeted, there's, there's more to it than that and. And you'll notice that some of these modules that are part of this. Um, potentially could replace modules that we're using in iWork and could again be uh, just elevating. And improving our uh, service delivery and in this area and and some of those others. When we find um, after a year. Uh, how some of these modules are working for us, then we can evaluate if we'd like to continue with those modules or, or. Um, revert back to what we were doing before, but we're really excited about it as staff. Um, we're excited to be able to provide a higher quality of evaluation of, of streets. And more detailed planning in, in our five-year street maintenance plan and be able to move forward with some more data in, in those decisions.
Do we use, oh, sorry, go ahead. Do we use iWork for any other? Services or was it just for that?
No, we do use iWork for other things. It's a, it's a work order and work order processing. Um, also, if you go to the city website and report a problem, that's through iWork. Um, and that um, community relations uh, module. Um, is, is also through street scan that we think might be an improvement to the iWork system. Uh, that's what I'm hinting at. I should say it more directly with some of the, the citizen engagement module, the work order module. Um, those are included in street scan. Uh, we were able to get a, a great deal on the, on the entirety of the package. And we feel like those other things are also an improvement to our, our system of delivery. But we don't have to keep those modules, right? We can, we can work those and see how they, how they go and then pick the ones that we feel. Continue to be of value to us.
So um, the citizen engagement module, that's what I wanted to ask about. Is that so residents can report um, deteriorating road conditions?
Anything. It, but we feel like it. Without diving into the details of, of the differences between the two, we basically feel like this will be more user friendly. And also in relating what's reported to public works in a much more efficient way.
Okay, awesome. I have one more question, sorry. Um. Once this is purchased and they start, how long does it take for them to do all the scanning and get this actually implemented for us to be able to?
Um, well, we, we actually um, are tentatively on their schedule for October, which. Uh, is why we're bringing it forward to you tonight. Um. It, they should be done in a few weeks and then there's, there is some time, I don't know exactly how long, but there is some time from when they actually. Collect the data to when it's all entered into the software and, and we're able to start using it. So I, I don't know exactly when that is, but I anticipate that we'll have it by November.
So definitely this fiscal year.
Yes, that, that's the whole idea behind all of this is get it done now so that by January, February, when we start working on. On the budget, that we'll be able to have our plan in place. Um, that is using this information rather than what we currently have.
Thank you. That's all my questions.
All right. Any, any other questions or comments?
I have a couple. So what is the total trade-off between iWork and this? Is the total cost an increase? And so how much or is it a decrease?
Oh, it's an increase. This is, this is more expensive than, than iWorks, but as we. Decide whether or not, we, we feel like we need a good year to be able to evaluate. Whether or not this is better or not. Um, and, and which modules we would want to continue forward. It, it may be that there's. That we can completely replace iWorks. Um, they, we also use iWorks for permitting, uh, for building permits and tracking of those kinds of things. Uh, if this is able to replace that, then we could replace all of it. If not, then we would keep some, but for sure, we know that the pavement element of what we're doing here. We, we definitely want to move forward with. Um, there's no question in my mind that it's far superior.
So the second question, you know, you have the, the breakdown of the costs. It says second year sixteen thousand five hundred.
Right, so if we move forward with all of the modules that are in this first year, that would be the ongoing cost for.
For all modules.
Yes, right. If, if we did not move forward with some of the modules, I didn't give you the full breakdown of everything, but there's this, there's an ongoing cost, right? And there's the initial um, implementation costs. So all of these have initial implementation costs for this year, but the ongoing cost is, as you can see, is significantly less. It would be. It would be even less than the sixteen five if we did not move forward with some of the modules.
But each time we would request a scan, then that would be an add-on.
Yes, each time we want to do that, that's just its own cost. Depending on.
The maintenance is sixteen fifty max for everything just.
Thereafter, yes, for, for everything that we've got in here.
It doesn't come with an automatic rescan every three years or anything?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
One thing you'll notice, and I'd like to point out, is that it also includes sidewalk. Currently, we're not looking at that um, through iWork. They don't, they don't do that. And so um, our public works department has been responsible for that evaluation and that assessment of when we have sidewalk needs. Curb gutter needs, things like that. And that will now all be included with this data package and. Um, we know that there's ongoing needs for sidewalk repair and replacement. We budget for that every year and now we can roll that um, into a more data-driven approach of how to, how to go about. Um, the sidewalk as well, which we're pretty excited about too.
And, and that will also save public works time for assessment and all of the rest of that. It's really, we're, we're going after efficiency here, hoping to spend a little money to ultimately save much more.
Great. Any other questions? And do I have a motion to?
I, sorry, I do. Um, so. Where we're at in the budget, is this budgeted for this amount? Is it under the capital projects or is it under public works? Section?
I'm pretty sure it's under capital projects.
Okay, so. Is the. Sorry, I'm pulling up here. Is iWork software maintenance, the three thousand dollars, is that about what iWorks is currently or is that something different under public works?
I didn't look at that specifically. I'd have to.
Do we know about what the differences we're looking at here between iWork and, and smart street scan?
I haven't looked at that recently, to tell you the truth. I'm happy to look that up and, and let you know what the difference is.
Okay.
And it's, it's hard to answer that right now too, because not knowing which modules we would keep or not keep. Would change those, those prices. And so it would, as, as we evaluate this and knowing what we would do moving forward. I anticipate that as we do budget next year, we'd be able to say, okay, now we know we want to keep this and keep this, but not keep that. In iWorks and in, in street scan. And then you'd be able to see the difference. Does that make sense?
Um, so looking at. The, the contracts, I, I, I'm worried about the contracts. I'll be, I'll be upfront with you. There's a lot of concerns I see in that. Um, as far as the termination, if we were to say, okay, we're gonna do this for one year, there isn't a really a termination other unless. That we, there's a failure on one party or the other. Is that?
Yeah, by us not paying.
Just not paying, we just terminate it that way?
Yeah.
Okay, and then um. So the way I'm understanding it, if I'm, let me know if I'm correct, is they host all of our data. Uh, we don't own this data that they are able to have. They host it for us. And so if we cancel, we lose all of that data. It's not something we keep.
That's correct, yes.
Um.
Right. Without the software, we have no way to use it.
Okay, so if we, if we pay this forty-four thousand upfront and then next year we decide, oh, we don't actually need all of this. We can continue to pay. A portion of that sixteen thousand or maybe even less if there's some services that we don't want. But if we decide, oh, actually. We can go back to iWork just fine. We're gonna lose everything that they came and did with that forty-four thousand that first year with all that data.
If you, if, if we made that decision, yes, but there's. There's no way that we're not gonna use the pavement element of this. Um, I, it's just so much superior to iWorks that there's no. Unless, unless the council tells us we have to do that, that is not what I would. Propose. We would want to for sure keep the street park. And so the street scan and the sidewalks, all of that. Is something that I, I'm certain we're gonna move forward with. It's only the, the uh, public engagement and, and the work order elements where. Maybe iWork is good enough.
Okay, so if we were to. Sorry, are you, are you anticipating doing this whole section, the whole forty-four thousand for this first year? And then evaluate from that point on and remove things if needed?
Yes.
Okay.
This is, this is kind of a classic software as a service, right? Where you, you pay for the use. And when you decide that you're not gonna use it anymore, you don't have access.
Right? Okay. The access to all the data, it shows that it's for one year from the delivery. That just means if we don't keep paying that annual sixteen thousand, then we just leave all that access to it.
Right. Just just for your reference, the the street portion, I believe, is twenty-five hundred. Ongoing.
And do you feel that the sidewalk portion is is needed?
I do. I think I think that will, that's a small amount to save a lot of Public Works. And what it comes with is an actual video, so similar to like your StreetView with Google StreetView, we'll get that for the road and we'll also get that for sidewalks. So it it will help us to make decisions on what sidewalks need to be done just simply by running a few queries versus sending Public Works out and and having them try to assess all of our sidewalks. I I just think there's a lot of of efficiency and time that can be saved.
So I'm hearing you to say is we don't really have an existing database of the conditions of our sidewalks.
We do, but again, it's it's based off of either complaints or things that Public Works has observed. This will give us a full assessment of all of our sidewalks everywhere and rank them any any areas that need to be addressed.
So, sorry if I'm coming at this class half-empty, but I am. You're asking almost a forty-four thousand dollar expenditure to add more qualitative or quantitative information to a qualitative assessment that we've here done before. Meaning we've done this remaining service life, which is a subjective review. I mean, simply we're saying our roads are good, bad, worse. Uh, and you're actually trying to qualify those a little bit better as where to to spend future tough monies.
Yes.
Once those roads have been approved, though, they don't necessarily need to continue to keep evaluating because then you can put together a a standard replacement or repair, not repair, but a maintenance program. You know, crack seal every so many years, seal coat every so a year, so that you can extend it. You don't need to keep checking those roads. So it's almost like we're doing an investment for our current roads, but for our new roads, we don't necessarily need to apply this. Am I misunderstanding?
I I would say that you do continue to evaluate because Brennan hinted at it with the limitations of the RSL evaluative tool. And that methodology, just the name, remaining service life, and it's by years. So in theory, if you had a road that rates it an eight, if you came back in two years, you'd expect it to be a six. Remaining service life. However, there are times where you reevaluate and it remains an eight. Or sometimes it's actually become a nine. Again, limitations to a visual assessment, different people, but also limitations to that system of evaluation. And some roads will, it's not a linear path of degradation for roads. And so that's why you do repeated evaluation every few years.
I understand that aspect of it. I'm struggling with the value received for the costs we're putting forth uh, in computer software. We're simply, we're I don't know if it's going to create that much more of a difference between an RSL eight and RSL seven. There's still roads within the same genre that need to be fixed. So I'm I'm still trying to understand more about your efficiency statement and how much that that efficiency quantifies. Is it an FTE? Are we talking, we're saving one FTE, two FTEs? Okay, now now the money makes sense to me. But if you're saying it's going to save you a half an FTE, well, now it's a push.
I I think the savings is in is is in the the time spent in engineering and what we do every year. The way we've currently got it set up, we have to run a spreadsheet and update that manually. Trying to integrate it with iWorks. And I feel like what this will allow us to do is to come up with those projects in a matter of a few hours as compared to days. And I think I just think that that it it's hard to put an exact number on when your break-even would be. But I'm I'm certain that within a few years, we will save the money.
Okay, I I'm not finished yet. My next follow-up question is, we're talking about iWorks and iWorks allows us to use we use iWorks in other aspects rather than just roads. But yet we're saying we want this for roads, but it could become more of what iWorks is doing for us. Are we looking at hidden costs down the road that if we move all of our work order, maintenance, our maintenance management system over to this system, that there are going to be other costs that are going to come forward to this council to incorporate?
No, that's that's why I I put on there, the second year was the sixteen five. If if we move forward with everything, then you would be looking at sixteen
So getting rid of iWorks and then going all to this new system would be an additional sixteen five every year after that?
Well, not all of iWorks.
So we're going to maintain two systems now?
Possibly. We 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 want a year to be able to assess the difference between the two before we move forward with all of one or all the other or parts of one and parts of the other. If it, there would be a reduction in cost in in one or the other, depending on which one we feel like is the better one to move forward with.
Okay, thank you.
Why did you have something?
No, I just, I mean, just doing the simple math, if it just saves each department or it saves engineering and Public Works eighty hours, it pays for the modules. The only thing you're paying for here is the street scan and the sidewalk scan. And so it's, I I'm in agreement with it. I think it gives you something that's actually more data-driven than than what we currently have, so.
I just feel like, how long would it take any of our Public Works employees to go through twenty-eight miles of pavement and forty-six miles of sidewalk and then input all of that into data and then send that over? And have that updated. It seems to make a lot of sense, especially since we know how stretched our Public Works, this our department is right now.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find it on the budget. I was just wondering, do you know what was budgeted for this? I I couldn't find it under capital projects. Okay.
Yeah, it was budgeted for specifically with this.
Okay, thank you.
Two more questions, comments? Recommendations from other cities using this? Do we know who else is using it and what their feedback is or is this all Brandon?
I know in it, so this is a national company, but they're fairly new. And I know that there's a few cities in Utah. I know specifically Pleasant Grove is using it. I don't remember the other ones off the top of my head. There's one or two others. But there are various cities throughout the nation that that use this. We just, I guess, all I can say is, as as we've done multiple trainings on this with them, we just feel like it it includes everything that we want to assess. And it does it in a really efficient way so that we feel like we can save time. And so what it produces is that ultimately, we're we're, the target is, let's get as much done as we can for as little as we can and make the most progress. And we feel like this gives us the tools to do that.
And I I agree with that. If if we heard somebody that's been using it for a couple of years, it'd be nice to know. I mean, it sounds good on paper. But are we really getting the quality scan that we think we're getting? You know, it'd be nice to hear from somebody else that's used it for a while to, you know, like, I didn't see anything necessarily in the packet.
Quinn, on page two forty-two and two forty-three and from there on, it does have contact information for people, different cities who have used it. And actually, it looks like scans of what they've actually done for them.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just my last comment was the the money side. Just something to consider, you know, obviously, use the first year. If you're going to only rescan every third year, obviously, if you're using it in place iWorks, then you you want the continuation. But if you're not needing to replace iWorks with it, then you could just pay forty-four thousand in three years, which would save you instead of spending sixteen five for two years between and then another sixteen five plus scans on top of that next year.
Well, no, because we need to be able to use the software in those interim years, and that's the sixteen five.
Unless you just went with the certain modules, but yeah.
Right.
I'm not saying you have to do that, just something to think about after the first year.
Right. I mean, one of the things to to point out is that this this has a customizable degradation algorithm. And so based on on, they've they've done a lot of research on on roads in different areas of the country and how they degrade, depending on what type of material they are. iWork has nothing like that. So i- if you go into iWork, once they do their original scan, if it's scanned, or I shouldn't say scan, their assessment, let's say it came in at an RSL of six, it just stays in the software as six until you do something to the road or you manually go in and change it. This has an algorithm based on when you did the scan, as as time moves on, where it's projected to be. Anyway, I I think it's really good. Thank you.
One more, one more question. So this can be done at any time of year, right? Because of the type of scanning it's done, even if there's snow or ice on the streets? Yes, no?
No, it, we we want it done before the snow flies. Like I said, it comes with a, like a Google StreetView. I mean, they also include signs and and they put that in there as far as as their their condition of the signs. So there's a few other things we haven't even talked about that are included with this. So we want it done before the snow is here. And like I said, they are doing something, I believe, in New Mexico, the first part of October. I believe we're on the schedule for somewhere to the middle, to the end of October.
Well, I think it's fantastic for us to be able to have a a digital scan of our city, basically, to keep on a database. I know that it seems like it's expensive because forty-four thousand dollars is a lot of money. But when you think about the cost savings to our Public Works Department, to our engineering and to be able to maintain everything so much less what's the word I'm looking for? More efficiently, I think it's kind of a bargain, actually. Relatively speaking.
I have just a few more questions. So I I did see that, you know, we need to make sure that there's no garbage cans or anything in the streets because I think that was going to be an additional cost if if we did. Is there a plan in place as far as when they do come to scan to make sure that there isn't anything in the streets to?
There's there's no way that we're going to be able to have the streets completely cleared. What they're trying to point out is that there, it's a camera, right? So just like on Google StreetView, you have, when you look at that, there's cars in some places. So you can't see certain things as much as we can do. So if this is approved, then we'll we'll talk to them specifically about their schedule, exactly when they'll be here. And if there's a way to maybe post on social media, you know, the days that they're going to be doing this type of thing and try to keep, you know, as much as you can off of the streets, that would be super helpful. I I think it's difficult to think that you could get everything off of the street, but we could try to do as much as possible.
Okay, and then on on page two twenty, there's an invoice, and I just had a quick question. The top half shows the hosting and support at two thousand dollars, and then the section below is at seven fifty.
What page did you say?
Page twenty, two twenty. I just wasn't sure which is which.
What's your question again?
So the first graph shows data hosting and support at two thousand dollars. And then the second graph below, it shows it at seven fifty. Oh, it's a discount. I see, okay.
The Brandon Jones discount.
Yeah. That's what they labeled it as. We we just asked if they could, if they're, if we were willing to do these types of things, is there a discount? That's what they put it at. That's what, that's how they labeled it. I don't love that they said that, but
And then the other discussion I had was, how many other companies or businesses did you look at? Were they all software as a service or was there other just software only that you could look at? Or what other bids did you review on this?
It wasn't necessarily a full-on like bid process. It was us looking out at whatever we could find. And there were at least two or three other companies that we, there was one in California that we looked at. I forget the name of what that one was. And they had some similar things. But the ability to put in our Public Works projects, the algorithm for degradation of the roads, a few of those things, we felt like this was the best.
Pardon me, I didn't pick up on this. This is a cloud-based service or is it hosted here on on the city's network?
No, it's just web-based. So it's not, it's not hosted here.
Okay, it's web-based.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just hate software as a service. I really, really do. And I know that that's the way we're being pushed, so sometimes I just have to get with the times. But I I would, I would really love to know if there was something available that could be able to allow us to own our own data that we could use that isn't software as a service. But I anticipate that you guys dug into that and looked into what you needed, so.
We did.
Okay, there's no more comments. And I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-one dash forty-six.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution twenty-one dash forty-six, StreetScan Service Agreement. Do we need a dollar amount?
Yes, please.
All right, hang on. Forty In the amount of forty-three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars?
Second.
Okay, with motion and second, any further comment? We'll have a real call vote, beginning with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right, the next item is more of a report by our city manager, Dave Larson. It's about the storm drain utility rate study, but we wanted to include it in our regular discussion items because of the import.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have much additional to say other than what was put in the item introduction for the packet. Again, the process of doing the capital facilities plan and the IFFP and the IFA, it was pointed out that it's been a while since we've looked at impact fees for that. It's also been a while since a true rate study has been done for our storm drain system. And so that's the next step that has been planned for a while. And so again, just kind of a heads up and opportunity to to discuss that or answer any questions if the council has it. But the main thing is is just knowing what has happened with storm drain to this point, knowing the health of that fund relative to our other enterprise funds and is the least healthy. And and so we anticipate when that storm drain rate study comes back, that it could be very different than what we're currently charging on our monthly utility bill. Again, we don't know what that will be. We just know what what the needs are. We've had conversations internally about the O and M, about the capital project, based on the draft CFP that we've seen. But all of that goes into that utility rate study. And and mostly just a heads up, a kind of a public heads up that that's the next step. That's the evolution of this process. And and we're looking at whether we're charging an appropriate amount on our utility bill for our storm drain system. And as staff, we we don't want anybody to be caught unaware that we're looking at that and that we anticipate a change, although we don't know what that will be. It's done by a third party. So again, happy to answer any questions and talk through it, but it's mostly just a report that that's taking place.
It's just me. Well, I don't know if it's just me, but me, I have a question and it's out of ignorance. I just, what what does the monthly utility fee for the storm drain actually cover? What is that for?
So if you look in the in the budget under the storm drain, it's essentially all the O and M. So it has personnel, it has, you know, cleaning of the system, maintenance of the system, all of that type of thing. So equipment for that. Right now, we attribute essentially a quarter time of of an employee to our storm drain system. Our needs are such.
Our needs are such where that's probably inadequate. Um, based on state regulations and just good asset management principles and those types of things. Um, it probably needs more time devoted to it, so that's the kind of thing that is in the ongoing operations and maintenance that that we feel will probably show up in in the rate study once it's looked at in detail.
Do you know when the last time we raised rates on storm drain was?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't remember, but it has been, it has been a while. I want to think it was about two thousand four-ish, two thousand six-ish.
Two thousand, did you say six?
I think so.
Oh.
It's been a big topic in municipal utilities committee.
Okay, thank you.
It's been a while. And the process when they implemented the storm drain and and did some of those, um, I would say wasn't quite as detailed. It wasn't a full-fledged study like we're doing. So we're trying, again, trying to do a data-driven approach. And so that that's why we're going through the process that we are and and budgeted the way we did. So um, as far as a timeline, um, I'm not sure exactly how fast it will turn around. Um, I anticipate by the end of the year, but um, I'm not sure how quickly that that data will be will be turned around, once we are able to provide all of the uh, numbers from the CFP and IFFP and IFA.
There was a certain portion of that that's related to the CFP that we did not want to move forward until it was adopted by you. So now that that's been adopted, we'll move that part forward and um, uh, we can report back more on when when we anticipate having the first draft back to you for review.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Thanks for the heads up.
All right, uh, next item is new business. Do you have any new business? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to council and staff reports. And I'll begin, um, council of governments meeting last week. Uh, Western Resources came uh, to present there. They're working to get land use planning teams together with water districts on a regular basis, since they are interrelated. Um, this, they want to address water access, supply and shortages 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 to ensure good city and county land use planning, so we're just going to probably see more of that, those being combined. Also, Safe Harbor reached out and wanted us to bring up uh, the their domestic violence and sexual assault crisis center has significantly, the cases have a significantly increased since COVID. Um, they turn away up to five hundred people annually, and their social workers are experiencing compassion fatigue from this, and uh, if you'd like to support them, uh, you can go to their website and volunteer or donate. Um, they would greatly appreciate it.
Do you have that website?
I don't have it on my notes, but I I think you can just.
Safe Harbor, is that what you said?
Safe Harbor, yeah, and it's the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Crisis Center. That's, yes, mhm. All right, and then also, uh, the treasurer position vacated by Paul. Uh, was reposted, we reposted a request yesterday to gather additional applicants for that. So we'll report on that later. Uh, that's all I have. I, Councilman Halverson?
Sure. So uh, the only thing I have to report on is Public Safety Committee uh, met yesterday with UDOT. We had a very long discussion. I don't know if it was a great discussion, it was an educational discussion. Um, we we discussed a lot of the items that the the public has voiced opinion that we've or voiced problems with. Um, the main one, uh, well, not main one, there was three main topics, but the uh, off-ramp coming off of eighty-nine to uh, South Weaver Drive. Uh, they are going to put a no U U-turn sign. They're also going to put orange flexible barriers down the median. Um, our our little bit of fear with that, though, Angie, is is they may come towards your house and do more U U, you know, go towards you and come back.
I will tell you, within a few minutes, seven people within a few minutes in my driveway.
Yeah.
It saves them so much time.
We had the director of Region One, Rob Smith, and then, or Rob White, sorry, and then I can't remember the, she was a signal. She's a sig- signal technician and traffic study technician. Um, and orange flexible barriers. They're like candles, well, they're like candlesticks, but they're not a candlestick barrier. Oh, yeah. I mean, we discussed, we discussed lights, we discussed all sorts of different options. Um, the lights, the light, uh, you have a mixed bag where it could delay traffic if you don't do the right type of light. Um, they also talked about our traffic count going east and west, if they did a study on it, because they're big on studying numbers and being uh, reactionary, um, that we would not have near enough numbers going east and west to have them ever justify a light. Um, but they they did, they did agree to do those first few things. Um, they did also agree to do a study and look at some of those sightlines and look at the light more and see what we can do. They were going to look at wait times. I was surprised what they told us the wait time was to get through the light in the middle of the canyon was between fifteen and twenty minutes at peak hour. So that means if you're backed up to the top of Hill Air Force Base, you know, I ninety-three, it could take you up to twenty minutes to get down through the light. Was that the correct number? It was, wasn't it? And uh, so that's obviously excessive, but it's also, they also have changed that light to be the longest light they know of to go north at a hundred and eighty seconds in the state.
Yeah.
And so to allow more traffic to try to get north or south, depending on what time of day it is. Um, so they are trying to do that. Um, we also then moved to uh, the speed limit on uh, South Weaver Drive and the issues with the charter school and also with the city sign. And the speed limit basically is not going to get reduced because they're very numbers-driven, and I and I really pushed hard on this because I didn't understand their study. Their study basically says they take an average, then they get to the eighty-fifth percentile of all the cars they shoot with a speed gun. And they consider that the comfortable speed for that road, and that's the speed limit. It doesn't have a a safety bear- in item in there, it doesn't have anything. And so their speed study says the the speed limit on that road and the average speed is between forty-two and forty-seven miles an hour in that area. And so the speed should be forty-five.
And they sort of, they they look at unimpeded cars.
Yeah.
They're not lined up.
If there's one car, like Haley driving slow in front of me.
That's what I always do.
And backing us all up, they won't count those. They throw those out of the set study. And so I pushed on that a little bit, it didn't go anywhere. Um, but uh, and trying to think of how else. They are going to, they did agree to meet with the charter school and discuss different traffic patterns. They also agreed to look at red striping differently, so to get rid of the left turn out of the school. Um, maybe a little bit better. Um, they also agreed to look at our site triangle up by Maverick off of twenty-eight hundred uh, to see if putting the right turn-only lane, the extra lane to the to the east uh, would help. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, go ahead, Dave, I can tell you want to say something.
It sounded like you said they were getting rid of the left turn out of the parking lot at High Mark.
No, did I say that? No, to help with the left turnout. I I, they're going to paint or look at the red stripes, so people won't park close to that. Because right now, they come up and park, I think we've all seen the public comment, they came in, they park right next to the fire hydrant. But they talked about maybe red striping that farther to the west um, to help with that site issue. Um, the one, the one question we had, and Brandon, maybe this is an assignment, but I don't want to get too far into it for you, but to bring back up our site triangle that we used, did we use the, I think I wrote this right, Ashto? Ashto, I mean, I know Ashray and all these other things, but not that one, so, but uh, guidelines to do our site triangle?
No.
Okay.
No, our, what's in code, as far as the site triangle goes, is, as far as I know, is just arbitrary. I I mean.
He was talking about UDOT's calculated site triangle based on Ashto.
Yeah.
Different than the city site triangle.
Oh, I thought you were talking about, when you said ours, I thought you were talking about the city's site.
Did we, when we did the site triangle up off of twenty-eight hundred?
Twenty-seven hundred?
Did we?
Are you talking about the the drawing exhibit that I put together? Yes, it has both, it has the cities and um, what UDOTs would be.
Okay.
Based on Ashto.
Okay, Ashto, because it, she thought it was going to be like three hundred feet if we went according to those guidelines. But I don't remember our.
No, it was longer than that.
Huh?
It was longer than that.
It was longer than that.
Was longer than three hundred feet?
Well, as far as.
Basically, the takeaway was let's look at that diagram again.
Yes. Brandon, will you look at that and send that diagram to us again, please? And they agreed to do the same and give us whatever they felt were recommendations there. Um, because, I mean, we talked about what the possibilities, again, you know, if it is an issue. But other words, the the no right turn on red is not coming down until the problem is solved.
And the problem is the city sign.
Yes.
Yes. And and the signal box, not just the sign, the light signal box, according to what he said in the meeting.
And I was, was am I wrong that they, the signal blocks would not impede them taking down the no turn on red?
I don't, I didn't ask that question.
I asked the question, what what would, what it will take to take down the no turn on red, and it was to remove the city sign. The city sign is the one that's causing the no turn on red to be there, so. It's something we need to figure out what we're going to do with.
But they did admit that they did approve the issue, they just, with the complaints coming in, they revisited the issue and realized that there was a problem. They approved it originally.
So they approved it knowing that it was in violation of their own site triangle. For what reason?
Just, they didn't, they didn't give a reason, other than just to be good neighbors with the city.
That that they, they mentioned the city really wanted it. That's what was mentioned, just to be fair.
So if it's a problem, and the the question of liability is still being on the city, has that ever been answered? Is the still, city still in the cloud of liability?
That that is why they won't take down the red, no.
So UDOT still has a liability, even though they put the no turn on red?
They, there is no liability there because the no turn on red is there. That's why they will not take the sign down.
For them.
For them, and they can't reduce the speed limit to reduce that site triangle based on, the whole reason is, is the study doesn't support reducing the speed. And so if they just reduce the speed to change the site triangle, people, they say people will still go forty-five, and then they're still liable.
See, I see, I understand what their perspective of removing the liability from them by putting that sign up. But does that still not remove the liability from the city, because the city is the one who put the sign there in the first place, which is causing the liability claim?
So there was a request made specifically to get a statement from our attorney about that, and I saw an email today uh, as a portion of his research, he's requested uh, traffic reports, accident reports from DCSO. And uh, the email today was following up with DCSO to to get those reports, so he's in process of putting that that statement together.
I also have acknowledged that DCO is not going to have many traffic reports, because a lot of people don't call the Davis County Sheriff's Office. There's been accidents there, but there's no reports substantiating those accidents. They just get each other's insurance numbers and move on. So I don't think that's going to be a holistic review of what's going on at that intersection, so I still think there's a cloud of liability on the city, and I still think the city needs to take action.
I would, I would disagree, because if the, if UDOT's saying they don't have liability, how do we have liability? If the sign's there.
Because we put the sign there, forcing them to put up the their sign. If we didn't put our sign there, they wouldn't put that no turn on red sign there.
But then the only way someone turns on red is if they break the law, and then you're not liable as a city.
That could be, that could be argued in court.
One one hundred percent, I mean, that, that's just like speed limit signs, stoplight stop signs, it's a no turn on red sign, period.
I think liability is one thing we need to consider, but more, more is. Are you talking to me?
No.
More is about the fact that the functionality of this, with this no turn on red will be compromised with the future development coming. It may not be an issue today. But when we have the loss command, the car wash, all that traffic, um, and the increased traffic from other developments coming in, it will back up that intersection. Um, so it is something that if we don't choose to take care of it now, we are kicking it down the road, I feel. We're kicking it down the road for somebody else to do this, and I think it's um, responsible of us to figure out what we need to do to solve this problem now, because we are kicking it down the road if we don't.
That was one piece of the conversation with UDOT that um, I think was really frustrating for all of us in the room. Was that we were trying to be a little proactive on development and changes that are occurring in that part of the city. And and the answer was essentially, once changes happen, then we can reevaluate. And and it just was not a proactive approach, and again, all of the numbers that that Blair cited, and so um, they acknowledged the conversation, acknowledged the issue, but but it was not all of the solutions that were brought up were not, hey, let's go do that right this minute. It was when changes in the area necessitate those um, actions, then then we would look at it. So if something's going to happen in that area, it would be the city forcing, forcing the conversation, sorry.
And the last thing to report on that was, uh, we talked about crosswalks and Haley brought up where some may be needed, and they just asked us to submit a request, and they would do it, they would be happy to do a count study on pedestrians to get those crosswalks put in on South Weaver Drive.
Just just for the, if I, if I may, they count it by twenty, twenty people in any given time period crossing the street would be a good consideration for a crosswalk, and ten if they are seniors. So um, if anybody has any thoughts where they think that there is at least that number crossing certain areas and other certain areas where we have sidewalks on one side and not the other, just something to consider.
They would conduct a pedestrian, I don't even want to call it a.
Uh, uh, crossing the street study?
A pedestrian study to where.
Just count.
Count, how many?
Count.
Whatever you want to put on there for for crosswalks.
Is that for a specific amount of time? Is it twenty people?
Any given time period?
All day or like altogether?
Any given hours.
Hour.
Hour.
During any time of the day.
And we we did ask, can we request it to be, you know, after school, so that's during the high demand time, and they said yes. So that it wasn't like our study when it was done without school being in, so.
I just have one question about High Mark. Um, I had another idea besides the email I sent out about how to mitigate the traffic, maybe. Do we need to discuss, is that a discussion that UDOT has with the district, and can we have a seat at that table to give any ideas?
I mean, after reading your email, I actually was thinking that we need to have a seat at the table with, it it actually is directly with UDOT, the charter school people, it's not necessarily with the district. And I don't know why we wouldn't have a seat at that table if we made that request, or we can have our own meeting with them as well.
I had a really good idea after my email, too, which I mean, occasionally it happens. But I think, and and maybe this is totally crazy, and they would just shoot me down, but they do have a gate right there on the west side, and they have to have a fire lane that goes all the way around. They could block that the playground off during certain hours, pick up and drop off, and let parents drive around the back, drop kids off in the front, drive around back and go out.
I had that same idea.
Because they did bring up the fact that they are responsible for the flow of their parents. Um, that's why we can't get, yeah, but the way that they're picking up, they have that whole, they have that responsibility because that's part of the their state mandated regulations. And uh, that's why they don't have get school zones and those things, because they're considered a non-walking and the parents pick up, that's the way it was explained, correct? Um, we can request a speed zone, but I, they they said it's not likely. Because they have to come up with a, the school has to come up with a plan for the school zone type thing. And usually that's for walking kids, but charter schools don't get walking plans, so.
They also didn't favor like a crosswalk and allowing them to park back on the other side of the street, because it's not like a bus stop where you let the kids off and they all cross at the same time. because it's not like a bus stop where you let the kids off and they all cross at the same time. They would just be crossing everywhere. So.
Well, I would love to be able to have somebody there to kind of.
Agreed.
You know, petition on the city's behalf.
I don't know, maybe we ask if they are going to meet, but we, or we initiate the meeting, whatever. I, I mean, that's just something to have.
I'm happy to reach out to the, to the school and or UDOT to say we'd like to be part of that or initiate our own meeting.
Thank you.
But it was very nice of UDOT to even meet with us.
Yeah, they also calculate that eighty-five percent of drivers are law-abiding citizens.
So that by that logic, we could drop the speed limit down to forty and everyone would go forty.
Well, that's what I told them.
Said that, but they, they didn't.
They didn't go for that. They didn't buy that. Um, also, one more thing, Blair, the concrete barriers, they're thinking, they're looking at putting concrete barriers in that spot, the dirt road.
They actually had someone up there fixing the fence this evening.
Oh, really?
The fence, the reinstalling, the barbed wire fence had been cut down when they did the fiber. And they were doing something else up there this evening. So someone got on that right away.
Great. That's good to hear. All right.
I don't have anything to report. Thank you.
Just a, an update on the dust discussion. It won't take an hour like we did last time. Going through all the details. But um, one thing I'll ask the staff is, you know, what direction, you know, what plans staff has at the end after I start, uh, you know, talk through the different things. But uh, after our meeting last uh, two weeks ago, we went out and did a few more studies um, of dust that is just collected in people's, you know, residences and around buildings. So not in our dust collection boxes, but just the stuff that, real fine stuff. Um, it's much smaller than uh, the majority of the stuff we're finding in the boxes. Um, and so there's a question, you know, from the health standpoint, is it too small? And I don't have the equipment to do that. Uh, so one thing is for us to consider, you know, maybe either renting or obtaining our own. Um, Councilman Windsor found some uh, good options uh, that we could pursue potentially. But it'd be nice for us to at least have an independent um, measurement to understand just how small the particles are that are blowing through. And you know, at what level they are. Um, we did also, excuse me, have a discussion with um, some of the gravel pit companies and representatives over the last couple of weeks. Um, one of the big questions was, you know, now that the secondary water is off, you know, are we gonna see a significant uptick? Are they gonna stop watering and whatnot? Um, Sticker Parson told us that they are still watering the same amount. They have a well that they're pulling water from. Um, it accounts for about two thirds of the water they're using. And then they also then use culinary water for the other third, roughly a third that they're doing. So they are still monitoring and, and managing like they had been prior to the secondary water being turned off. They. They are waiting for another shipment of the magnesium chloride uh, to put down on the other things. But they are mudding, um, covering up the areas that as they are um, going through the open areas as they're pulling out some of the different particles for their shipments and things like that. Um, so they're trying to stay on top of it. Um, the actual amount of dust um, last week was slightly up from the week before, but not beyond, you know, what the worst one was that we had earlier this summer. So you know, that was somewhat positive that it wasn't, you know, a significant increase or anything with the water being turned off. And then when they uh, told us, you know, that they're still maintaining a similar amount of, of water management, that explains why. So they, they seem to be and want to be, you know, partners in trying to um, help us understand and, and manage it. Uh, they are looking at the data that we're sending them from our best collection boxes. I have a meeting set up with uh, Geneva to talk a little bit more about some plans that they have um, to um, monitor and, and move forward as well. So right now it's, it's very positive. They're trying to um, you know, work with us. Uh, they appreciate, you know, the openness of us sharing our data and things like that. But back to the original question I had for staff, you know, based off of last meeting and, and some discussions since, are there certain things that we are pursuing? You know, we need to probably identify what we need to be looking at. You know, one would be considering getting some um, measurement equipment to monitor, see if we're exceeding any small amounts of particles that are, are blowing through our air. But beyond that, anything else that the staff is actively looking at from our last meeting?
Yeah. So the, you know, Jamie provided kind of that list of ideas and options. And uh, the council kind of nodded their head and said, yeah, that's great. And so as staff, we've, we've taken that list and uh, we're essentially trying to pursue those different things. Um, try to gather data on equipment costs and what that may be, um, those types of things. So we can bring that back to the council to, to make some decisions on that. If it's budgetary, if it's resource-based, um, that type of a thing, as well as um, some of the other low-hanging fruit type ones. We're trying to, trying to tackle those quickly as well.
Okay. You have any questions?
I just have a comment. Maybe this already came to you, but um, a resident that watched your presentation lives on fifteen forty east, just up ahead of us, um, kinda where that mudslide had happened. And up above her, they are digging a pit up there. It's an incorporated um, Davis County. Um, but she says occasionally when the wind blows, you know, towards the east, it really fills her up, her house up. But she was thinking that maybe that could be the dust that you weren't able to identify on the west end is actually coming from maybe that one.
Right. That, that's a good point. And I haven't, you know, pursued trying to get samples from up there.
Are they really digging a pit up there? I thought they were more processing materials than, I know they have a salt barrier for like a slurry, but I didn't know they were actually mining up there.
I don't know what they're doing up there. They're digging up there almost every night and they have been for a couple of years. I can see the light from my house. Um, but I don't know what they're doing exactly. But she says it does accumulate quite a bit of dust. So that might.
I doubt it creates dust. I wasn't sure they were digging, but it'll be interesting to find out. Yeah, to, to Quinn's report, I, I, I like the idea of monitoring equipment. Um, given that the, the development agreement is set to expire in three years and they have an option to redo. If we have any concern, it would be good to have our own database over three years to, you know, to go on. Either yeah, they're compliance with the EPA and the state rules or no, they're not. Um, and we can build upon that, but I think that's a starting point. The initial ones I looked at, I don't know if they're the right ones or not, but the ones that I looked at was referenced, they're only like two hundred and ninety bucks, something like that to buy. Um, I don't know what they are to rent. And if those are the ones that get the PM two point five and are, can get volume, you know, volume mass over certain hours and we can distribute, you know, four or five of those around town, I think it's well worth the, the additional cost of the city to start creating its own database to substantiate what Quinn's doing. And Quinn's done a tremendous job and I wanna thank him for the efforts he's put together so far. And wanna support that by, you know, seeing staff, you know, looking to the monitor aspect.
And just to the comment that Wayne just made, you know, my data is not gonna hold up scientifically in court if somebody, you know, questioned it. So if we did have to, you know, argue that, it would be good to have some um, manufactured, you know, qualified machinery measuring this stuff.
Well, and, and Wayne, if you've already looked into that to some degree, um, so that we're not doubling up efforts, I'd be happy to know what uh, what equipment you're looking at and, and that type of thing.
I can send you the links, but you may want to maybe take an hour and consult with an, an air quality specialist and engineer and see what, you know, this is what we're looking for. And he may come up with a totally different, I may be off base. Uh, that's not my area of expertise, but I do think a monitoring equipment, if it's reasonably rentable, uh, we ought to pursue that. So I or Quinn can get you those links. Yeah.
And, and anybody really, if you have thoughts to that uh, degree, please forward them over so that we can include that in the research process.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the Parks and Recreation Committee met last week. We had an update of our Kenya Meadows West project. So parking lot uh, looks fantastic and the fencing has begun. I don't know that it's finished. I looked as I drove very safely down South Weaver Drive through the field and it wasn't finished from what I could tell. But it's in the process. Um, we do, we did run into somewhat of a, an, an issue, I guess I would say. So we had our specialist come out to review the filling, painting, what do you call that?
Court surfacing.
Thank you. And he noticed all the dirt around because we don't have any grass in yet and said, if you surface this right now, it will not have time to cure and your courts will have a subpar finish. So that means that we need to wait until spring to get the surfacing done till after the sod is in. Um, so our contractor is helping in the middle of October to have everything buttoned up and finished for the season. But we're asking um, all of our community to please stay out because it is an active construction site. There will be barriers up that, that park will not be able to be, that part will not be open until next spring.
Do we know is the dust from not having grass or from the dust?
Great question. But if you're down there and you walk around at all, it just, it just, you know, like it's very fine. So if we were to surface it right now, we would be guaranteeing that it would not be a good product.
I'm just wondering if come spring, should we get grass that will help not have dust on that or not?
Yeah, the, the dust, the, installing the sod will help keep that down, right?
Okay.
But that does bring up the point of our dirt bike track. And we have to cover that. The material that's there will be the exact same problem. So we're trying to come up with some creative solutions on how to keep that from becoming a problem. And if anyone has any ideas, please let us know.
Will you be a problem while it's carrying?
Well, if we, I, in my ideal situation, we would put some material on top of that bike track to finish it before we do the surfacing. That's what I would love to see happen.
You need to cap the bike tracks so it does, it does problems while you're finishing it, of course, but you're saying, all right.
Yeah.
I'll think on that.
Think about that. Okay.
You just caught me off guard. I don't have these registered.
Okay, I'll check them next week.
I do have one question on the contract, given that they're, it seems like given an extension to finish the project. Uh, don't know what the, the time limit was if they had it. Is there a no cost change order to extend the time? So there's no liquidated damages being assessed for them not completed by a certain date or is the contract far enough out that they're not gonna be hindered by this delay?
The, the contract deadline was the end of October. So yes, there would be a no cost extension to their completion because it's, it's our request.
Yeah, it, it's no fault of theirs. So I think if you haven't done so, that might be something that needs to be.
Yeah, to document that change and contractually, yeah, make that clear.
Yes, we will.
Um. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Windsor.
Uh, we, we code committee met again today and we're working on the vision. You know, we're, we're working on the uh, development agreement aspect. Um, and the code aspects of development agreements and master planning for certain areas of the general plan. Um, staff are gonna take the next three weeks in developing that and come back with uh, some substantial information, which might lead to a joint discussion with council and planning commission in regards to how to incorporate that with the vision of those, those areas. So uh, work is being done. Uh, staff has, have some assignments on their own that they're working on. They're bringing two uh, codes forward to the planning commission in October. Parking and private, um, I guess you call them private roads, uh, non-public roads are coming to the planning commission in October. Um, there's another half dozen that they're working in, in addition to that, noise, dust, different type of dust. Sorry?
Landscaping.
And landscaping. Um, so anything I missed on that, Annie? And we had tacos. So if you wanna come to code committee, you, you might get fed. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Dave?
Just a reminder that the Utah League of Cities and Towns um, annual convention is the next three days. And uh, and then the International City Management Association Conference Annual Conference is Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of next week as well. And so uh, I will not be in the office, but I will be working elsewhere. And if there's something urgent, feel free to, to call me or text me. Everything else has been accounted for by the council.
All right. Thank you. Trevor, do you have anything?
I have a couple of things. So um, just so you're aware, we have uh, pretty much done the integration for our HR software. So that's uh, that's getting ready. So if you go to our um, application section on the website, it's a little bit different. You can fill the application and write online. We can review it online. And we fill a little bit more into the twenty-first century. We're pretty excited about that. Um, so uh, it makes it easier to get, grab applications. It also integrates with a lot of other job boards. So um, we've put up jobs yesterday and we've already gotten a substantial amount of traffic on those. So we're excited about that. There, there's a Google and I didn't know it was that.
I, I just, I like the picture that's on careers.
Um, it's more representative South Weaver than that.
I love it. It's perfect.
The mutton button. Um, another change that we, we've made recently is uh, we are shifting um, duties for, from our front desk uh, area. Um, our new treasurer position will move out to the front desk area and occupy the space that Shaila is currently sitting in. Shaila will be moving um, into the back office to focus uh, on uh, accounts payable, but also communications more directly um, as part of her job responsibilities. That means she'll be reporting to myself um, as communications will, will move under the community services uh, department there. So um, that's gonna be a slower transition as we start getting staff in. So uh, she'll be out there for the foreseeable future as soon as we fill those positions and we'll make that transition back there. But we want to make you aware of that, that change.
Yeah, if I can add to that report, just um, as staff, we are really excited about being able to essentially manufacture some additional hours uh, dedicated to communications. I know that's been a, a conversation point for a little while and um, to do that within current budget and current staffing levels. Um, we feel like it was a pretty creative solution and we're excited about the possibilities there. So hopefully you'll, you'll notice the difference um, moving forward on that.
Great. Thank you. Brandon, did you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Michelle or Lisa? All right. All right then. That's all. I will now entertain a motion to go into closed session per UCA Section fifty-two dash four dash two zero five one D to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property.
So moved.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?